Call to order. And flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item three, citizens desiring to be heard.
Doing a great job.
Nice.
Welcome, Mark.
Thank you.
Hi.
I'm trying to make the paper.
Item four, consideration possible action on 30 minutes of March 31, 2015.
I'll move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Item five, well, she's not here yet, so Millie's gonna be late. We're gonna jump over to item six. I believe, consideration possible action on approving sealed bid for one used bus-style motorhome to serve as mobile command center for the sheriff's office table from March 31, 2015.
Would you like to recommend or accept the bid?
Very good. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
What are you gonna do with them? You have one there already. Just keep it in two?
Way past the time.
Alright. Item seven, consideration possible action on knowledge and receipt of each bonus payment from Devon Energy for pooling order number 624330.
I just set it up for one segment, sure it's like the one we did a couple of weeks ago.
Devon, check.
How much?
Who's that to you?
I think that's the county general.
County, yeah. Really? Almost not worth getting that bad. We have a motion.
We used to give them for sixty-seven cents.
Sixty-seven cents?
Well, this is the least bonus payment, it's not the royalty payment. We'll collect royalties off of it.
So I hear a motion, so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item eight, consideration possible action on approving resolution removing fixed asset items from inventory that are no longer in possession of District Number One.
Chairman, this is based off of the state auditor's turnover report, and a thorough inventory that's been conducted, and the resolution that was submitted, these following items are no longer in possession of District One that were on the old inventory list. That inventory list has since been changed to reflect current items on hand. And yeah, imagine that's pretty old. We have the inventory list. Now, this listing of equipment that cannot be found, we're not, I mean, there's nothing that says anything nefarious or anything like that, so now we just can't trace it back to where it was. It's never been removed from inventory. So it could've been traded in. We've been trying to go back on past meeting minutes and trying to discover if anything on there was noted as traded in, but all the items listed here, we haven't been able to find.
I remember that Easy Striker. Clotting it back, hook it onto the tailgate, go down the road. It wasn't very effective. Long time ago. Remember the detail. I see more than that. So just take a word. It's over $186,000 for recording this. Yeah, but it's over probably several years, you know, ten, twelve years. We just got records to keep. We gotta get update records. Got any over there in New York? Or Martin? I know Joe Hall took a whole bunch over there to Leonard. I don't know any of that. Say you're leaning this way. Thank you, sir.
I'll move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Lot of history there. Ah, consideration possible action on approving resolution selecting contractor for Serve Bridge Project JP 29880.
Chairman, these next three items are all Serve Bridge projects. We have selected these same contractors to do those, but we're treating them all as separate projects so they can be tracked and finished individually.
Are you selecting a contractor or engineer?
Engineer, I'm sorry. Engineer, not contractor. Consultants.
But I guess an engineer could be considered as a contractor as well.
The contracting engineer, yes, sir. Absolutely.
I mean, it says selecting contractors.
Yes, sir.
So I thirty-five this morning.
They're all contractors.
Morning.
So you done the interview process and all?
Yep, with ODOT, we've sent all the paperwork into ODOT, and everybody's.
So who'd you select?
MacArthur Associated Consultants.
For all three?
Ah, 29880. I don't see 29881.
They're all, they're separate.
Oh, they're all separate.
They're separate resolutions, because they're separate projects.
There you go, see it?
Go ahead. They've been through the process, they've been through the process.
Right.
I'll move. I'll move on all three items.
Okay.
Just so you don't have to read them all.
You really do got something to do today.
Just trying to help him out.
Would somebody like to second those three?
I guess I'll say my own stuff.
Sounds good to me. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item ten, consideration possible action on approving resolution selecting contractor for Serve Bridge Project JP 29881. Oh, we did that on all three of them, that's right. So on eleven is twelve, just makes sense. So we need another.
I'll pass three that way.
You just need to go to number twelve.
Number twelve, consideration possible action on approving resolution selecting Bryant Lane in District One for county maintenance.
Mr. Chairman, this is another one of our resolutions. Bryant Lane is a dirt road, it's currently used. The school buses now ride all that and stuff.
Sure.
We actually have, one of our local law enforcement officers lives up on the end of that, and what we need to do is be able to just take a couple of those gravel in there and help them keep them having a mud road. And in order to do that, we need to have this resolution.
Chair.
Thanks.
I'll make the motion. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item thirteen, consideration possible action on approving resolution changing the name of Air Depot Road to Pine Street between Wildwood and Simmons Grove. This is a petition that I became aware of when I visited Baycock down there, and so we had the original petition. I have called everybody on this list, and they are all aware of the ramifications of changing the name of their street, so.
I'll second. But you might follow up with Oki to make sure that change is on there.
Oki is the, yeah, okay, we'll do that. 911 Center's doing that today. So I'll call Oki as well.
That's the petition we're supposed to hit.
Petition, that's a fact. Item fourteen, consideration possible action on approving resolution point receiving officers for various accounts.
I have none for fourteen or fifteen.
Okay, and, oh, let's see here. Item sixteen, consideration possible action approving the following temporary road crossing permit for HIT.
Geez, that's all you signed in reserve.
I'll make the motion with approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Done.
Aye.
Do we want to go back to Millie for the bid before we go to transfers?
We can.
Okay, then let's go back to item five, consideration possible action on approving sealed bid 2015 CB2 for asphalt road paving projects in Green Focus Estates.
As you are aware, we opened bids a week ago for the road project for District Number Two. We received one bid from Atlas Paving Company. In keeping in compliance with the grant rules, we did contact Department of Commerce, and we got a letter in writing from them that says it's okay to award. They did that because it was advertised properly. We sent it out to several bidders, and we just got one response. And you guys, if you award this, it would be in the amount of $198,415, which is a little over the budget amount that we had originally, so.
What was the grant for, Millie?
The grant was $98,680.
And you're gonna pay the remaining rate, or you want them?
Ah, yes.
So it's not coming out of CBRI?
Unless you don't mind if I take it out of CBRI.
Well, I think we might want to talk about that.
Make sure it's on the same page. I'm good if it's coming out as MNO.
I second.
I have a couple of notice of awards for each of them.
All in favor?
The process that will follow is, I will get this to the contractor, I'll give one of these copies to Troy, and that will put them on notice to get their bonds and insurance back to me. When I get that back, I'll package some contracts, ship them up here for Troy. The DA has to approve the bonds and insurance contract documents, and then we'll schedule pre-construction meeting and issue notice to proceed.
What kind of timeline are we looking at?
Normally, they get this back within 10 days, so we could be doing that, you know, in 15 days or so.
These are just for two originals, I guess.
Yeah, you can keep one and I'll get one to the contract.
Very good. Thank you, Millie. You do incredibly good work. We really appreciate all the, all the things you do. Item seventeen, consideration possible action on approving.
I have one thing, it's for you. You need to sign here as the officer, and then for the board to sign.
Thank you, Millie. Drive careful.
I imagine she did. She tries to tie together if she's got it, but I don't know today if she was headed somewhere else.
Ardmore.
She looks an awesome thing.
Really? That's a drive.
She does really, really good work for us, though.
She does. Ten, we're even, have a surer on maybe, she had that one.
No, I don't even think, because she would've never dealt with them to do it, so it wouldn't have happened anyway.
It wouldn't happen either.
So are we on the addendum?
Yep.
No, we're still on consent agenda.
Okay.
Cash fund.
Cash fund. Come on, Peterson, at least Monday.
Trying to hurry so you can go.
See that guy for the last time. I got. Up here? I forget about this. So I did the wrong place on this one. Put it up top.
I know it's the first one you've ever seen.
Yeah. Sorry, it's Monday.
So it's his fault, it's Monday?
Yeah. Yeah, it's my fault. If I hadn't slept through the weekend.
The next one, one of them, Mike.
Yeah, I screwed up. First one I'd ever seen. Very cute. Nope. There you go. Look at that. This is some real exciting stuff you guys up there, huh?
Why couldn't Phil say that when he shows up, there's never any excitement?
Nothing.
So you should show up more often.
Okay. I do have a question. You guys taking questions?
Sure.
Sure. Phil Nichols, 415 Ridgecrest Drive, Guthrie, Oklahoma. On the hospital, guys, there's been a lot of talk on that. What was the actual sell price in the hospital? Or who would I find that out from? What was that?
It was two pieces.
I'm curious on how much we've actually received. That's my real question.
Good question.
Troy, Cynthia's sitting in there.
I don't see them.
Phil, to answer your question, I think the total was 4.2 million or something.
Was the sell price?
Yeah, then, but what throws me off is the money that we still collected and all that. Cynthia's probably gonna be able to give you that answer.
Okay, thank you, guys.
So if you'll be patient, she'll be in directly.
Appreciate that.
I'd say her board has her number.
On 10K.
Can't believe I have me on my mess, jeez.
Well, just.
People were looking for early sales tax. You wanted to see how much sales tax we had, and this is what came in.
Total amount?
The total amount to the county.
Are you talking about the new road deal?
It doesn't matter. It's a third of a third of a, three quarters, apparently.
What was it, about $90,000?
Actually, what came into the county's total was $282,824.8 cents. Split three ways between highway, jail, and county for the firefighters. So $94,274 went to each one of those three. And then us being one of those three, that gets split three ways into those 31 and change between all of us.
Don't split it all in one place, Mark.
I've got one place to spend it all. District One.
That's what I made.
But see, Mike, if I don't spend it all there, I get a couple. Mike, you missed that one. 31, 424. Per district. Per district, yes.
And also, just as an FYI, remember that money does not go to your normal NO. It's separated, different funded accounts. So in your systems, you'll need to make sure you set up that fund and account.
I'll just go drive your roads, Monty.
What's that?
So I'll just go drive your roads now.
That's good. I'll take him for a tour. Thought you were gonna say you're gonna take him for a ride.
I've been on that ride before, that's not a good ride.
In cowboy speak, that's never a good thing.
Yeah.
Good thing there's no cowboys that ever size the money, huh?
Could be. I mean, you can go tour hers in both districts, and then we'll go tour mine, and it's gonna take twice as long, though. These pairs.
Yeah, but you can go twice as fast.
I try, 'cause my roads are smooth.
They're all flat. They're all flat and smooth. Be back.
Monty's on his game today.
And in my district, it would equal his, because you have all the ups and downs, that increases your latency, because you're also doing that.
You've had more roads probably impacted by the oil field, haven't you, than anybody else?
Yeah, the oil field is.
Really eating hard.
It's been tough up here, but some of the old companies have been really good and helped me fix roads. Yeah, they really have.
That's good.
Devon Energy being one of them.
That's good.
There's several of them that chime in, then there's several that won't.
Right.
Take to give is bad, but, you know, Devon, they fixed a lot of roads.
That's good.
But they tore up a lot fixing the ones.
Remember that first time you came in here and said Devon, he called you and apologized that they didn't notify you first that they just gravelled three miles of road? That was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But when they, we, I mean, it's still ours to wear down.
Are we at the addendum yet?
Just about. If you're ready, I was waiting till you finished signing those. Those blankets right there, the last of the consent agenda.
Motion.
I'll second, my next motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Citizens, oh, wait, we have the addendum, and we don't have any of our communication experts.
We got Craig here.
Craig?
Craig, would you like to come and read this?
Sure.
Here's the man.
Here's the gentleman.
Resolution proclamation, whereas in 1991, congressional resolution named the second full week in April of every year National Telecommunicator Week. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time or any place and require the assistance of police, fire, or emergency medical services. Whereas 911 is the hotline for help for people in emergency situations, and the 911 call taker's voice is the first assurance that help is on the way. Whereas 911 professionals regularly meet the challenge of extremely stressful situation with calmness and efficiency. Whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. Whereas the safety of these emergency responders is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the 911 communications center. Whereas public safety dispatchers are the 911 dispatcher every day superheroes, providing assistance before any other emergency services arrive on scene. Whereas public safety dispatchers are a vital link for our emergency responders by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. Whereas public safety dispatchers contribute substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of injuries and illnesses on a daily basis. Whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of his or her daily job duties. And the rest of the now therefore be it resolved that Logan County declares the week of April 12 through 18, 2015, to be National Telecommunicator Week in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our region's citizens and emergency responders safe. Adopted this day, so on and so forth.
Very clear.
Hey, Craig, well done.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, we're at citizens desiring to be heard. And those citizens desiring to be heard.
If you'll answer your question, though, I'll give you a report of all of that.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Or if you just pump in the right direction, I can get it from them. I don't say anything.
Also, we're gonna spend some sheets, if you wanna see all of them.
Yeah.
We have invested, I think it's 2.2 million with the accounting in different mutual funds.
Right.
Paying out pretty good.
Good.
Yeah.
You guys are happy overall then with it, Monty?
What's that?
You guys have been happy with the?
Yeah, yeah, with the investment.
Yeah.
Pretty much.
Good.
Of course, you always want more.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
But it's better than a CD, you know?
Absolutely.
Paying 2.5% inflation, about 2.5. But one of my deals on that money is, I've been working on it, and I think the board agrees with me. Instead of me borrowing money for a piece of equipment, I'll just borrow from our trust and pay that money back to our trust. And even, I'd rather pay our own trust a little interest as I had some bank at a.
Wherever.
New York or somewhere.
Yeah.
You need to go to the track home, that one, I guess.
That's a different agenda, I mean.
I see. It is.
Are we done? Waiting on the chairman here.
Item 19?
Yeah. Comments, announcements, questions by the Board of County Commissioners.
I'm good.
Yeah. Have any real issues?
I'll make the motion adjourned.
I'll second. I'll second. All in favor? Get out of here.
I'll second as well.